So you guys good? Okay. Let's, uh, let's start tonight's meeting call, the, the April 18th meeting of the Harris Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Thank you everyone for being here. Um, a lot of minutes from last month. I'm sorry that I was not here. Kent, thanks for running things. Sounds like a good discussion.
Oh yeah, it's fine.
Uh, on a pretty complicated planning thing with the residential zoning and other, other things going on there. Are there comments or questions on those minutes before we move to pass them, approve them?
Move to approve.
Second?
Great. If I have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approve, thank you. Uh, public comments, though, there's an agenda, should be a printed agenda for you on the back table, is that true? There are copies of the agenda?
Number four.
Um, are there, yeah, oh good, there are. Is there anyone here who is here for something other than what's on the agenda? Non-agenda items, we can cover those and be done. Looks like there are not. So approval of tonight's agenda, please.
Absolutely.
Second?
Had a second from, from Jeff, jumped on that quickly. Those in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, so Planning Commission business, we have a number of preliminary plans and then residential zoning update, which is an ongoing conversation from last month and will be, I think, with us for a bit. Um, and some training coming up, which is fun to, to think about for next month. So let's go with Cavalry Church Phase Two Preliminary Land Development Plan. Does this interest you?
Yes.
Todd, thank you.
On December 17th of last year, staff received from Pentair Engineering a land development plan for a second phase of the Cavalry Church development that is served by a private street that connects to Discovery Drive, a property zoned agricultural. This phrase, uh, this phase proposes a 9,227 square foot building addition to the existing church that would house a youth area containing nine offices, restrooms, media rooms, and a lower level gathering space or room. Uh, the proposed Phase Two requires less parking than the original Phase Two from the 2013 plan, so no new parking is required for this current proposal. Staff has completed two reviews of the plan, the second of which was included with the agenda as well as a plan sheet showing what was proposed. Uh, the comments from the first review have been reduced considerably, uh, and it's thought that a revised plan can address most of the remaining comments. And I'll point out, the, the plans closest to me on the board back here represent a, a plan sheet that shows the scope of the Phase Two in orange as opposed to the entire property. What is below that are renderings of what the actual addition to the building would look like. Staff's recommendation is to move to recommend approval of the Cavalry Church Phase Two Preliminary Land Development Plan to the Board of Supervisors contingent upon satisfactory completion of all outstanding review comments.
Move to approve.
Second?
Okay. Motion to approve this, the who has comments or questions, concerns, needing to add to this?
And Mark Toretti from Pentair Engineering, too.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, it's nice. Beautiful, beautiful hillside spot and nice, uh, functional, functional addition. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Kent?
No, I don't have any comments.
Let's call a question then. All those in favor of approving the Cavalry Church Phase Two Preliminary Land Development Plan contingent upon satisfactory completion of all outstanding review comments? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, let's get into the other one.
Okay, we are done with that. Item A, motion passes. Onto item B, thanks for coming. Alex's ProScape Preliminary Land Development Plan.
On August 27th of last year, staff received from Pentair Engineering a preliminary plan develop, land development plan for the property at 550 Torrey Lane, which is currently being used as the professional offices of Alex's ProScape, a landscaping company, the property zoned general industrial. Purpose of the plan is to allow for the construction of a 7,200 square foot garage and storage building for the business on the eastern portion of the property. Uh, the revised plan for the project included reference to a second phase that would propose a second garage and storage building at 5,400 square feet on the western side of the property closer to Torrey Lane. Two reviews of this plan have been completed, the second of which was included with the agenda as well as a plan sheet. Most of the comments that remain are engineering or stormwater related and include a waiver request of a stormwater regulation as described in the review letter from township engineer Jerry Northridge, who was here at the meeting tonight. It is believed that most comments can be addressed in a revision that we hope to review prior to the May Board of Supervisors meeting. The plans on the left, uh, represent this plan. The top plan is the landscaping plan, basically, and the bottom plan is one of the stormwater management plans. Staff's recommendation is to move to recommend approval of Alex's ProScape Preliminary Land Development Plan to the Board of Supervisors contingent upon satisfactory completion of all outstanding review comments.
I have a comment. So if I've got this right, when, when you're pulling off of, what is it, your, are you on loop road or?
Sure.
Or Torrey? When you're on Torrey, that retention pond is right above Miller Electric and, uh, okay.
Yes.
That was my only comment about with roof sizes that big, um, there'll be a lot of water runoff and those properties are below that, it is directly below them, uh, which, it's not a real dry area down there to begin with. Um, and I have never seen a retention pond like that before. It looks more like a canal and, uh...
Can you explain the tampering thing where you say you're going to, if it doesn't work?
Um, basically, it goes into the, the inlet, the outlet structure will ultimately pick up the overflow and then, um, it, it all gets conveyed down through Neesment down to, I guess, Route 322 where there'll be a PennDOT permit to tie into there. Uh, the shape of the inlet, I mean, the shape of the stormwater was, if you look at the property in that area, it's very long and narrow. And then with the, with the, um, industrial setbacks, they are 50 feet on all sides. So that really takes a big, big chunk of that property that really couldn't be used for anything. So we're, we're trying to give them some use for some of that area and, um, like I said, this was submitted last summer and it was going through trying to figure out a way that would be cost effective to still build a basin and have some area to, uh, build a future building there, like a, a future warehouse, uh, and garage building. So it was, I said, this, it's been a while since we've, you know, finally made it to the Planning Commission, but it was a lot of redesign and trying to work and see what would work the best with that site and it's still affordable to build.
So can I follow up on that? That goes into PennDOT storm plant?
Yeah.
And that goes into Spring Creek?
Um, I think that's where ultimate goes to, yeah. And would, uh, we'll, we'll need a permit from PennDOT for that.
And do they do a study, will they do a study on the impact of that, on the additional volume of water?
Well, in our report, we, you know, we submit the, the stormwater report and they review it.
Then we'll look at it. Okay, I, okay.
Is there, in, in the second building, there's elevation from, is that a gutter line that runs over to the retention pond?
Um, that's to pick up, uh, one is, one is we're picking up the roof drains.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
There in that area. So, and then, and then we're also picking up, there's some slope down to the office building and we have a little sumped underdrain system here to pick up, you know, right now the water runs there, but we want to pick that up and that goes to the swale that goes to the retention basin. Yeah, so we're pretty much trying to catch all this and get it into the basin.
Question, just in general, we've had 20 questions from, from Jerry on this outstanding issues, right, compared to the, and I, I don't understand all of them. It just seems like there's an awful lot of unanswered questions and I don't know if we can get that addressed and...
I, I guess those two I'd like to specifically bring out. It's, uh, for both Jerry and Mark, it's the, uh, is the issue of the wall and the setback and then also the, uh, how you're going to be able to construct this detention area without compacting the soil. So whoever wants to take...
So the first question, um, essentially for the stormwater aspects of this project, this was a redesign and an overhaul. So this is a first crack from a stormwater perspective. So while the plan's been in three times overall for a majority of the work, um, I don't think the number of comments is out of line with a first crack at a stormwater when it's been overhauled to this degree. Um, and then to the second comment about the wall maintenance and that space, uh, that is something that we looked at closely. How far apart does that wall need to be? How far does that footing need to be from that wall? Um, Brian Chilton, the structural engineers, also reviewed this to make sure that there is maintenance space in there. But one thing I stress in our meetings is it's not just about building it the first time, it's about who's going to fix it in 25 years or 35 years once this thing is memorialized. So I'll let Mark speak to the rest of your questions.
Yeah, thanks Jerry. Yeah, a couple of things, like going back to what he said about constructability and, uh, Michael, we've been working with them, we're on construction, Justin Stoner's here, uh, they worked on the wall design and he can, he can chime in, but pretty much the wall is going to have to be built from outside and not from the outside of the basin.
Yeah, so the retaining wall one, if, if you're in the inside of the detention facility...
Could you point out it while you're talking about?
We essentially would be over excavating on the outside of the wall system and that would be your drainage and your geo grid to support the wall. And then you would actually be constructing it from the backside. So you're actually, will not be operating any equipment in the infiltration basin at all. And even if there was any issues with the wall down, down the road, long-term reality is you still have enough room, even with the waiver, to get equipment in there to repair the wall.
Back, back between the, the building and the wall. Uh, and pretty much what we've done is the, the footing elevations for the Phase Two building are going to have to be set at a, at a, as a maximum elevation, they could be lower than that so that the angle repose is good versus, you know, where, if the wall would come down, they could take the wall out, um, it would not affect the angle repose or the footing availability.
That is in the retaining wall design. We made sure to do that.
How deep is it?
I believe it's on the plane, I don't have. It's actually not that bad, it's pretty close to standard.
It's about maybe somewhere between four and six feet. Yeah, it wasn't these, I think about five and a half, I think is what comes to mind.
I was just gonna, well, I was just gonna double check, does Zoom people can hear our comment, our conversation going on?
Especially Rick.
Yeah. Where's Rick?
Richard, do you have any comments on this?
On the retention pond?
Yeah, I was hoping you might, with your, uh, expertise, have questions or comments.
Hey, I was, I'm worried about, you know, how much storage was going to be in it above where it appeared to be infiltrated. Um, but I, I contacted Jerry a little bit, um, to discuss that and with what's downstream, it doesn't seem like that should be a problem. Um, certainly maintenance long-term, um, I think still probably is a concern, but if that maintenance falls on the owner and there's room to get in there and do it, I, I think that it'll probably be okay.
Thank you.
So I also had, uh, some questions or some comments about the, uh, the buffer planting. There's, I guess, a couple of different types of buffer yards on this plan and there are several comments relative to the, uh, you know, to the, the plantings and the existing plantings and, uh, you know, about maintenance of the plantings. So I, I guess I'll ask Todd initially if he could just explain the, the different types of buffer zones we have and if, uh, if you could comment on maybe long-term maintenance, if, if that's something that's practical for the township to manage that.
Sure. Uh, there are two types of buffer yards. The, the one that has all the colors up here is a buffer yard that's associated with the corridor overlay district. So there's a certain number of canopy trees, understory trees and shrubs that have to be planted per 100 lineal feet of the property line. And they've accomplished that with what they've shown on that plan. I believe corridor overlay plantings have to be maintained for at least three years. Anything that dies within that three-year period has to be replaced in kind. Uh, that's, that's what our ordinance requires. Uh, these other green areas here are a different kind of buffer. And that, that's a buffer in the zoning ordinance that's required anytime a, a, a commercial or industrial property borders a residentially zoned property. Uh, and you can see this particular buffer yard is, and it has to be site obscuring. This particular buffer yard is pretty solid looking. This one is fairly solid looking, but this is, you know, township open space. Uh, so if there are a few gaps there, I don't know that it's really going to make much difference. This buffer yard's pretty solid. Our comments basically came from this buffer yard and portions of this buffer yard. The, the, the green on here I colored in representing what they're proposing to build. There is a, a fence, an existing fence along this property line and there are existing plantings here and interspersed here and down in here. Our comments basically were, we can't tell you that those buffer yard requirements have been met if we don't know, you know, the screening capabilities of the existing, uh, plantings and the species, uh, that are planted to know if they are screening. If they're canopy trees, obviously that's not going to be year-round screening. And even though there is a fence down here, uh, we have no control over that fence whatsoever. So, uh, if the, if the buffer yard plantings in that buffer yard, uh, are a little bit less than what we require and the fence is in place and somebody removes the fence, then we would obviously have a yard that doesn't have adequate buffer, uh, yard planting. So our comments are basically, tell us, you know, what's, what's in that buffer yard and, and what's in this buffer yard where there aren't, uh, things proposed now demonstrate that there is a screening capability that meets the ordinance requirements. Uh, and if, and if you can do that, that's fine. If you can't, provide some more plantings to, to meet the ordinance requirements.
Yeah, and I said, we'll, we'll look at that and especially that one because there's a mix of, there's already plantings already there.
Sure.
I tried to fill in the gaps as much as I could. On the south side, I was assuming with that six foot, basically have a six-foot site obscuring fence, which actually does better than any of the landscaping. Now, can that be added note? If, if that is removed, they got to install side obscuring buffer, does that, you know, meet the site obscuring requirements?
It doesn't because, I mean, that's, that's a section of Chapter 12 zoning, so it can't be waived or it can't be modified. We certainly would not encourage the property owner to remove that fence.
Yeah. But, you know, he put it there to, you know, cause of the neighbors.
Right, I, I know, I know.
For good intent.
You know, I, I've been on the property a few times and we've had conversations about these types of things on several occasions. Uh, but in, in the, you know, since it's now at the land development stage, that Chapter 12 thing applies now and there's really no way around it.
Uh-huh. But I saw, I mean, we could, we could probably get some, put some plantings there behind it similar to there, but, you know, there may be a few more gaps at the moment. I mean, we'll see, we'll, we'll look at that and see.
Well, let's, let's first quantify what you have and how much of that is actually screening material.
Yeah.
And if some of that screening, if you strategically place other evergreens through there, it could probably be a conflict.
Yeah, okay.
So you mentioned during the overlay district, there's a three-year requirement. I read one clause in the zoning ordinance that talked about the buffer yards, if, if something dies, it has to be replaced. It sounded to me like it was indefinite. Is, is, can you enforce the buffer yard indefinitely if it's on, if it's on approved plan?
I, I'll check the ordinance, but I don't think so. I think, I think the only, the only requirement we have is that everything that dies within three years be replanted.
It's for quarter overlay.
For quarter overlay, yeah. I don't know that there is anything that requires replacement in the other buffer yards.
It says replacement within a year.
Within a year, okay.
Yeah, within a year, eighteen.
Hmm. I saw something in, in one, in one section in 12.2, I don't know what the section it was, it talked about maintenance and...
Okay.
If, if not, then it's certainly something when we get into the discussion of revising the maintenance or the, uh, the buffer yards, that we should look into the long-term maintenance.
Yeah, agreed.
Sure.
Agreed. Anything else, Kent?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Any, Bob?
Again, Jerry, I'm, I'm just concerned with the number of, of questions you had and that seems like an awful lot of outstanding issues. Are these all completed? Are they?
We just got the review back on Friday, I think, and so...
So I guess...
But we're looking at the, um, like the stormwater ones, like I said, like, like Jerry said, um, they're all ones that can be addressed. Uh, but, but pretty much the other ones for Todd and him, what he's, what he talked about is dealing with the buffer for those two areas that we'll have to look at. Go back and I'll talk to my client about what was planted there originally and we'll put that on the plan and then we'll look and see what we can, you know, go with that. So I don't see any of the, any outstanding issues from, from what we've gone back.
So procedurally, okay, if we approve this, all right, then it's going to the board? Next step?
Yeah, you, um...
And it's a preliminary plan yet.
Yeah, so, so as I indicated in the agenda, we'd like to see a revised plan before, get it in in time so we have a chance for another review before the board meeting. Or procedurally, if there are still 20 outstanding comments, the plan may not be on the next board supervisor's agenda. I don't anticipate there will still be 20 comments, but procedurally, if there are, there's nothing that requires us to put it on the next board agenda.
But it won't come back to us?
No.
So if we, we bless this and it's basically one of the supervisors without blessing, I'm telling you, everybody's getting this done.
Right. Which is what we follow up on anyhow.
Yeah, I know, that's just, it's, it seems, I'm sorry, it just seems like an abnormal number of questions to have on a, on a preliminary plan.
Just one or two.
Yeah, and it could be a fact that it's been a while since we've had something like that and my brain has become completely foggy and white. And it just seems like it, it's a lot.
Yeah, the unofficial rule, uh, for both the, the board and planning commission, it's more so the board than it is the planning commission since you're an advisory board and since typically there are revisions after you guys see plans is 10 or so comments or you don't make an agenda. In this case, we made the exception because a lot of these, these things are really technical and, uh, they're, they're, they're working pretty hard to get it addressed.
I think the safety plug here, Bob, is it doesn't have to be next month and it's contingent upon satisfactorily taking...
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I, I understand that. It's just a matter of...
Percentages.
Procedurally coming to us with a whole lot of issues and it's gonna, we're gonna bless it or not bless it regardless, right?
Yep.
And then it's going on to the board of supervisors. And that, that is, you know, historically been an issue with some of us on, on the planning commission, that when, when these come to us, that a lot of these matters are taken care of and we don't have a whole lot, a whole string of outstanding issues.
Well, feel free to word your motion anyway you deem appropriate.
Considering you're saying, I'm going to make the motion.
Any other comments on this agenda item? Yes? Can you come up to the microphone? I think it's better for the, uh, the sound and owl system. Thank you.
So, uh...
Who are you?
I'm sorry, who are you? My name's John Potter. My property borders onto Alex's ProScape.
Okay.
Kent, can you help me with where my property is?
Right here.
Right here. So, you know, myself and our neighbors, we, we understand their business. We understand it's zoned that way. Um, a few of us have had conversations with township supervisors, with Todd, with Amy. Um, any, you know, I, I think overall, the way this was explained, I, I got that this other building is over there on the other side of the property at Torrey Lane, is that correct?
Right.
To your left?
Yeah, to our left, but, um...
Near the cow.
Near the cow. This was a, um, holding pond, yes. Uh-huh. I, I think, you know, I think we understand it's a business and, uh, you know, we, the people at Alex's ProScape have been congenial and nice and, but still, it's 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM on a winter day, they need to load salt trucks. That's their business. They need to spread salt in parking lots that they have customers for. But that can be heard down in Honeysuckle, so it's definitely heard at my back window, which backs right up to their property. Clearly can be heard. And they sift dirt on weekends and I get that I have had talks with Todd about, you know, there's not a noise ordinance that can stop that. But my feeling is anything that can be done to buffer both the view, which is sparse at best and minimal in any season but the middle of summer with leaves, and anything that can be done to, at any, any way dead in the sound would be so much appreciated by the neighbors that border that property. And it's, it's not a personal problem with, with Alex and his people, it's, we understand it's a business, it's, but anything you folks could do to work with these folks that are planning this site development would be greatly appreciated because, um, I live there because of the neighbors I live by. If we didn't have the neighbors that we live by, we would have moved because that business is there. I mean, that's just the facts.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, John.
All right. Yep.
Appreciate you sharing that.
Yep.
So I'll just ask, um, is there any fence along those portions of the property right now, adjacent to the houses?
Not on that one. Just on the southern side is where the one fence is, um, over in that area. So nothing here, there was just a little, this little mound and there were some, um, groups of planting of a couple of evergreen trees and canopy tree and some shrubs, uh, currently in clusters.
So could you point out where, where the loading operation's going to occur?
Um, okay, what we, uh, we moved it back, it's to the back of the site here now. Currently it's up front where this building is, but they need better access to this building. So it is right in this area of the site, right here.
I mean, I'll, I'll just ask, I would, I mean, there's no ordinance requirement, but would the property owner be willing to, uh, put up some type of a, a sound fence along those residential properties?
Yeah, I could ask him, I mean, we can...
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that and discuss it and see what that, what, you know, what
that is. What do you mean by sound fence as far as?
Um, well, I mean, there are fences that have some sound attenuation to them, not just like a regular picket fence.
Yeah, uh-huh.
So I know, um, the only one I'm familiar with was at the State College Retreat.
Yeah.
Because it was needed there.
Yeah.
But, uh, so, and I don't know how expensive those are.
Yeah.
It certainly wouldn't need to be that tall, but, uh, I don't know if the property would be willing to look into that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's something, I mean, we'll, we'll look, we'll look into that and see, you know, what that does. Ideally, I mean, what'd be nice is if you could replace that with then the plant, some of the plantings, because if you, you're still going to do the plantings on that side too then, that's kind of what we were talking about on the southern side, is they still want to have a screened planting, even if you do have that, say, a six-foot high fence there, even, even a sound fence, you're going to, uh, so, but, uh, we'll, we'll have a look at it and see what, you know, uh, what we can come up with there, um, and, you know, look at some of the key, key areas, maybe in the back, back area here, try to, try to put it where it makes the most impact for the neighbors.
Okay.
I mean, the other thing, I mean, about the, uh, the landscaping, I think, I, well, first of all, as Todd was saying, I know it's a zoning requirement.
Yeah.
But, uh, also there is a comment in here about noting that you can't use that area for storage or parking and things like that. And so the landscaping helps to identify that area, it's not a spot to put all your stuff.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I think there's a benefit to still having it even if, even if you could put a fence up.
Okay.
So, um, so anyway, I'll just, uh, I'm going to recommend that the property owner just look into that and see if they could put up something for the benefit of the adjacent property owner since it is residential.
Yeah.
And, and this business, you know, yeah, the nature of the business is, or it does entail some early, early morning type things.
And pretty heavy equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would emphasize that as well, Kent, and I'm glad, John, you brought that up this evening. I think if we can do something that's maybe short-term, a little costly and perhaps a little painful, I think the long-term benefit for neighborly relations and quality of life for that community... a little costly and perhaps a little painful, I think the long-term benefit for neighborly relations and quality of life for that community would be, would, would be a, not just a good gesture, but the right thing to do. And if that can happen, and we please some neighbors, and it positively affects that community and doesn't impinge on business at hand, it seems like a good thing to do.
How about the backup beepers are loud?
I mean, they got, you gotta be able to hear that through the whole neighborhood. You guys are backing up all the time. Beep, 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 at three o'clock in the morning. Is that true?
Three, four, five o'clock in the morning. They have, they have to get out and solve the parking lots, and that's, that's the little motion, and they.
Yeah, it's a motion.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know, but I know they're loud, because I'm contractor, and it's like, they're annoying.
Thanks for considering that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So I, I'm, I can make a motion if we're done with comments.
Yes, I think we are. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
So I'll move to approve, recommend approval of the Alex, Alex's Proscape Preliminary Land Development Plan contingent upon satisfactory completion of all outstanding review comments, and that the property owner consider putting in a sound attenuating fence along the adjacent residential properties to help block the sound from their operations, early morning operations.
You have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor of the motion as, as proposed? Aye.
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 Okay, and that passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, residential zoning update. Boy, last month was a lively discussion. I regret that I missed it.
Oh, yeah.
The minutes, no, I do, and the minutes reflect a thorough, but not, not finished conversation. And it looks like we are, we'll touch on some of it today and have more to do moving forward. So, Mark, is this yours to walk us through, please?
I'll go ahead and just make a few comments, and then maybe you'll have another lively discussion this evening, so.
There you go.
Um, yeah, last month, you did start your discussion on updating the residential zoning districts again. This is the first time, I think, you had talked about it since last fall. And I had included some of the materials that had been provided to the commission last summer with your agenda last month, but I wanted to maybe go back a little further to when the first discussions were had about the residential zoning districts and the capacity of development that remains, and, and kind of some trends to maybe just remind the commission of some of your earlier discussions. So in the past decade, so between 2010 and 2020, the township added about five hundred and eighty units, dwelling units, in that decade alone. So some of those obviously were outside of the regional growth boundary in our rural areas, but I'd say the vast majority were inside of the growth boundary. A lot were Liberty Hill, but, you know, we had other developments too, Springfield Commons, Rocky Farm, Kwood North, things like that. So one of the things that the Center Regional Planning Agency does every five years is put together a regional development capacity report. We look at how much remaining development capacity there is inside of the region in each municipality. So we keep in mind, we had five hundred and eighty units developed over the last decade. Harris Township, give or take a few. We're due to, we're due to update this report here next year, so I'm not certain what it is. We have about eight hundred dwelling units left in Harris Township in the growth boundary. So if we continue to grow at a similar pace as we did in the last decade, it wouldn't take long for the township to run out of vacant land.
You mean the space for eight hundred more?
Yeah, the space for eight hundred more. And, and that includes probably about three hundred and fifty that have already been approved. Maybe they haven't been developed yet, that's why I say give or take. Some of them may have been developed since that report was last updated in 2018. So I imagine there's a few units that have already been, been built. But then there's only about four hundred and fifty or so units that are, we'll say, you know, on vacant properties like we looked at last month, and I won't pull up the map again, because that really had it hard for Deb to do the minutes, because I hadn't put that in the agenda. But that map, where you remember all those vacant lots that, that we showed, that's where those four hundred units are at, and that's assuming that the developer maximizes the density, which we have never seen in the township. We've never seen someone come in and propose seventy-five hundred square foot lots. We tend to get ten, twelve, fifteen thousand square foot lots. So even in a best-case scenario, there'd only be about four hundred and fifty additional dwelling units that could be added to those vacant lots that we looked at last month. So that was partially, I think, why the commission was having this discussion about how do we more efficiently utilize the remaining land that there is, and perhaps provide opportunities for different types of housing, other than just standalone, single-family homes, so.
So you're still saying that we have total about eight hundred?
There's eight hundred, some of which have been approved through land development plans but not built yet, and then some that have, they're just vacant lots like we looked at last month.
Okay.
So, yeah. And it's probably less than eight hundred, just because I know that the last time we did our update was 2018, and that was based on 2017 data. So we've had, there's been a fair bit of development in the last five years. Uh, Kwood North might have entirely built out in the last five years, so there's sixty or seventy units, I think, up there.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven units, yeah. So, and there's some certainly in Rocky Farm that have developed in the last five years as well. So anyway, last month, I obviously showed an illustration of kind of a really crazy, very densely developed version of, of a parcel out along Earlystown Road. There was some feedback from the commission of maybe having only twenty-five percent of the units being townhome style, and then the remaining being single-family detached. Now, I did not incorporate buffer yard ideas. I, we can do that in the future, but at this point, it was really just kind of from a raw density perspective, and I think that's what the commission needs to focus on, is, is trying to come up with a density that you feel comfortable with. How much would you want to increase the density potential of these lots? So this here, as I think I noted in the agenda language, this, this, obviously, we didn't maximize it. It gets pretty complicated trying to do this. I don't, I'm glad I'm not a developer, trying to eke out every bit of money I can, but, especially on a property that has a stream and whatnot. But, you know, looking at this, even if we were to maximize it just based on raw numbers, I came up with about twelve percent over what could be accomplished through the existing R1 zoning. So if you're looking at just trying to provide an opportunity for additional units, I don't think that's a lot. Twelve percent's not huge. Now, to the point that Jeff, I think, was making before the meeting, there's obviously a different style of units here, which is a good thing too, because we don't have a lot of variety, a potential for variety on the remaining residential lots that we have, because they're all zoned for single-family detached. So, anyway, I, this is the twenty-five, seventy-five split that the commission had asked staff to work on. Unfortunately, I didn't get any, I, I was pretty busy with some other stuff with the Village Parking Committee and the open, or the Official Map Committee, so I didn't have a lot of time to work on additional renderings for other percentages. But wanted to get your feedback and direction on where you feel this needs to go from this point.
I, I just wanted to clarify, this would be for a new district, something between R1 and R2?
Yeah, I think that the way this gets accomplished through zoning could be a new district. It could be an overlay. There's probably different ways of doing it, but it would require new regulations to be created.
It would be an option for any R1 districts?
Well, it depends on what the commission, how, how you feel you'd want to apply this. I don't, I don't know if you'd want to apply it everywhere. It probably depends on perhaps if it's an overlay or a separate district. You'd want to obviously avoid any type of spot zoning issues. If you were just gonna pick some remaining R1 properties that are vacant, that could be problematic. So I think it really comes down to kind of what vessel we use to move forward with a concept like this. And what, and what the commission and the township's end goals are too. I don't, with some of those vacant lots that remain, some of them are in the middle of existing R1 neighborhoods. I don't know that that would be well-received if it was in the middle of the hill, for example. Or, I think another one of the vacant lots was up Academy Street, where there's already a lot, or not Academy Street, Crestview, I think, up Crestview Avenue.
Okay, so, in reality, you've already allowed this to happen, because if you go up on the hill, there are so many mother-in-law apartments. You basically have probably twenty-five duplexes up there anyhow. You know, so now all you're doing is making it so that you could possibly develop it into that, because you still have the, what is it, eight hundred or six hundred and fifty square foot mother-in-law apartment? Which ends up.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, which becomes a rental property, which has two addresses, and now you've created a duplex. So you have a two-bedroom house with an efficiency apartment, so. You know, there's, there's loopholes all through the thing, and always, all I'm saying is that if you allow it, you add a diverse, you add a diverse housing market, which could possibly be less expensive for some folks. And look how well the gates sold. I mean, they were sold before they were bought, or built. So there's obviously a need for lower-cost housing, and you're not going to be able to do that on single-family houses. You're just not going to be able to do it on a single-family lot. It's gonna cost eighty thousand dollars. So if we're interesting, interested in doing that, I think this is something that we should consider in our R1 district.
Historically, in this plan, I don't know if, if many members, I know Bob's been around long enough, that we've discussed that when, when Harris Township's offered things as options, it's, it's basically wasted paper, because unless it's cheaper, nobody ever does it. So if, if, if there's interest in doing anything like this, there may be some places where you can accept it out, but if you're not gonna make it mandatory, at least partially, it's, it's probably, probably rarely if ever gonna be used.
So what you're saying, Todd, unless we mandate that we say seventy-five percent of the, or twenty-five percent is going to be this multifamily-type stuff?
You're not gonna get that diversity in.
You're not gonna get, yeah, I agree with you. You're a hundred percent right. We've tried a hundred and fifty different ways to get people to.
So, so to me, in hearing that, to me, then it's not trying to make options in the R1, but creating these new districts where it is mandated. This new R2, or R, R blend, whatever we call it, RB, has, has a requirement. Okay, that's, that's a helpful step, just right there. Let's not keep pushing R1 to be something that it's not.
And keep in mind, too, that providing the opportunity for more affordable housing, it doesn't guarantee that you're gonna get it, because even the gates are selling for two, three, some of them might be reselling for four hundred thousand dollars. That's hardly affordable in the, in the way that we want to take them affordable.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, Tommy has a couple of duplexes. He started off with it his, right?
Mm-hmm.
But you did see it in your development back before there was zoning.
You mean the duplexes?
Yeah, you have the complex that goes around in the circle that has the garden in the middle.
And the quads, yeah.
Yeah, so you had it, and then it disappeared, and then, you know, it's, it's, I don't know how you make it come back. And also, nobody, if, even if we, if we require it, then those have to be built. But there is no requirement says that they are not gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars.
Sure, that's right.
We can't control that. All we can do is make the offer, or have it be available, yeah.
So I, I might, I might, going back to where we were last month, we were looking at, you know, very specific, non undeveloped properties, and I think that's what I would want to focus on, is that we apply whatever we're talking about to these undeveloped properties, and not, and not to existing developed properties. So, you know, like this particular property that you have the drawing for, I mean, I could, I could just see that zoning that R2 myself, and, which would, that'd be different than what we're talking about tonight. And I could also see actually coming up with, if we're gonna call it an R1.5 or something to that effect, that it would even have more density than what you've drawn up here.
I think what we had initially talked about back, it was either last summer or perhaps before, was the idea of restructuring the zoning, the residential zoning ordinances altogether, and having R1 remain would be low-density, single-family, and R2 would become a mixed-density residential district. And I think the idea was that some of those existing R2 properties, they may not, the uses would be fine. They would be conforming, but this new R2 would have some type of clause for any R2 zone properties over a certain acreage. This type of a scenario would need to meet a minimum density requirement, because I think our R2 currently allows you to do single-family detached. So you could already have an R2 property that gets built out with just single-family homes.
Hmm.
I think the idea here was maybe expanding the boundaries of R2 to other parts of the township where some of these big vacant lots are, but having something in the R2 regulation specifically requires there to be a blend of housing types on these vacant lots that are over a certain, certain acreage. So there's a way to accomplish what you're describing, with still keeping R2 as the.
Do we have it, do we have any R2?
Sure.
And would that, would changing it apply then to current R2, they would then have new, new rules, if you will, under which they would need to develop?
They would, but I think most of them have already developed, and the idea of them redeveloping is probably pretty slim. And they're also very small properties that have already been cut up. So I think if you were to make these R2-specific regulations apply just to large vacant parcels, it would allow for, to ensure that these get developed in a certain way. And it wouldn't affect necessarily the ones that are already R2 and developed. The gates is R2, for example.
Okay.
That's helpful.
Yeah, and where, where's our developed R3?
It is, it is, yeah, because you've got a better angle than I do. Yeah, developed R3, Ashworth Woods here is R3, and then down here along Elksview Townhomes and Center State.
And are those from an actual, are those actually denser than the gates?
Uh, that's a good ques, I think they are, yeah. At least Elksview. I don't know about Ashworth Woods. That's, it, it's probably more dense than the gates, just because the gates has so much kind of undevelopable land with, you know, water features and stuff at the top. If you were to take that out, it's probably not any more dense, but.
Yeah, the gates is by far the largest property that's developed R3.
R2.
R2 is, yeah.
I guess my question was, do we have any left?
Any more R3?
I don't think we have a whole lot of either R2 or R3 left. It's not.
Yeah, we don't have it. That's the point of.
Creating more R2.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I didn't think we did, unless you want to consider the, you know, the Columbus Chapel's property, if he ever sells it. We already did that downtown area that, you know, would be higher density.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're talking not just creating these new regulations, but actually rezoning some properties.
Yes, right. Yeah.
Because all the ones we're talking about are currently zoned R1. Is that correct?
Yeah, everything we have, I think, that's large in, in size, that's vacant in, inside the growth boundaries, R1.
Right.
I guess we have some.
So that, that's the thing we could look at, you know, because I know we talked about, you know, the, the Biddle property, because it's, it really is completely surrounded by residential, and we talked about having buffer areas or a transition zone that would require a single-family, which I still think is appropriate, which, and again, I'll just say what I mentioned last time. I, I don't think it's appropriate to have any type of a buffer along an arterial road. I don't see a purpose for that, since you're, you're already, you're separated from the other side of the street by an arterial road, which causes more disruption. All the jake bricks cause more disruption than looking at a higher-density development in my mind.
So does this, I mean, from a density perspective, is this the, I guess, the ideal from what you folks hear?
I'm not prepared to, I'm not prepared to say, sign off on that. I think it was a suggestion, this sort of twenty-five percent was a.
I thought it could go up a little bit.
It could go out there.
What would you like me to try to show for next month in terms of density, so you can have a, I assume these illustrations are helpful, if they're not, let me know. But I tend to find pictures are easier to kind of figure out what it looked like, so what, what kind of a density would you want me to try to?
It's nice in, in a sense that you split these up like that, you know, but in reality, I would think that it would be more like what Tommy Sager did up there, that you would have a, a section of the townhouses, say, in the middle of the, in the neighborhood, and be surrounded by R1. You know, so as you came in on the main road into the development, that would be where you would have the townhouses, and then it would, it would spread out into. Yeah, the developer would, but.
The, the.
The lots, the lots that are next, when the developer's trying to sell that, the lots that are next to the three-plexes or whatever they are, will be worth less money than the ones further away. So he would probably cluster them. You know what I mean?
I, I do know what you mean. The contrary opinion that I've heard from a lot of people is that you don't necessarily want to purposely segregate the, the different housing types, because then you're encouraging devaluing what's not single-family detached, rather than when you intersperse it with. the single-family detached, and maybe that's a benefit to property values for both types of housing. I, I've read articles on both.
Both ways?
Yeah.
But anyway, it would be the developer's point. I was just saying, if you're going to make a map, you could, but I think it could be, I mean, a higher percentage, not by a lot, but a little bit, you know, because you're only offering, the way I looked at it, if you split those properties, you are getting twelve more lots.
Is there a way to look at this in a tabular form, as maybe you did it and you've forgotten? So that we could see, kind of like, we have this plot of property, and we could do it in Plan A, and Plan A is twenty-five, seventy-five, okay? Plan D is fifty, fifty, or thirty, seventy, forty, sixty, whatever, you know, something like that, so that we could, because this is helpful to see, but this, you know, this could, this can go out the window, right? I mean, unlike, so to me, I think it would be helpful to see it as a table to think about, oh, this looks like more sense, and then have the properties that are eligible to, to, and then add the properties that are, that we have available to work with, right? So we have this property, this property, this property, this property, that we've got to, how do we potentially see, no, I don't know if we're going to spot zoning in that, that case, but we're taking a look at it in a way that would, at least for me, to be helpful to say, okay, we have five, six different pieces of property, we have, we want to increase our density, we are available, the ability of housing by X amount, what's the best way to do that?
Yeah, I can definitely calculate out these numbers based on multiple percentages for multiple properties and just throw out a table as well.
Yeah, I don't know if that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it'd be, Bob, it's a good idea. You could do maybe just take, do three, twenty, thirty-five, and fifty, something like that.
And I don't have a zoning map, do we have a zoning map up here that shows how much we could actually, well, let's see, R3. R3 is.
You mean with the, with the properties that we're talking about?
Or, well, not necessarily the properties that we're talking about, but just to see, to find, to put a kind of lid on it, yeah, indeed, we don't have any more R3.
I can, see if I can.
Tom probably knows that off the top of his head, but I, I don't.
I don't think so.
I'll see if I can.
I don't think so either, but I just, let's, let's put a lid on it and say, period, we have no more R3, we have this amount of R2 that's left.
R2 with the Columbus Chapel, if I remember right, is the only place that we were considering having denser housing than all the rest of the properties that we have is R1. So, that's it.
So that, that leaves us with these properties.
But that was with the small-area plan, right?
So what I'm trying to get to, Mark, is trying to get to your report that's going to come out next year early. See, see what you think's available for us, and then how we might want to build it up.
I can pull up a map here real quick that'll help. Deb's going to love this, not the agenda, so she's going to say, what map am I referring to? There's no numbers this time, Deb, so this is our interactive zoning map on the CRPA's website. So if you ever want to find out about our zoning, you can go to our website, and you can click on properties, like this is one we were just looking at, and you can see, you know, what the zoning is, what the acreage is, things like that. So, yeah, I think down here for this, this R3 area, it's entirely, entirely built out. This is the other R3 area, Ashworth Woods, entirely built out. The only R2 is this and this, I believe, and they are both built out. I don't think any of these are vacant. Yeah, you can see there's buildings on all of them, that's all. So that's it for, for the higher-density residential in the township. That's all we have.
So that, that leaves us with this plan, whatever plan we come up with, if we're going to try and increase density, then the thought process becomes, how dense do we want to get?
Yeah, that's a good succinct summation of it, Bob.
The only, the only way you're going to have density is either through actions you take, or if someone comes in and requests a rezoning because they bought land and want to do something.
Well, I still think that the properties that you had mapped last month, that we should consider rezoning those properties with, I guess I'll call it, you know, this R1.5 or R1A or whatever, and, but require that adjacent to existing single-family districts, that there'd still be some type of a transition area required for, that would, you know, require single-family homes, with the exception along the arterial streets, because I don't see a need for that. And, and I personally would be willing, this, this, I guess, is a twenty-five percent bump up.
Yeah, about twenty-two.
Yeah, I mean, I personally would be willing to go up to fifty percent, and then allow the developer the flexibility of having a mixture.
We can do the table as Bob suggested for next month, and then we can also do some illustrations of what that would look like, so you have both, both a look at.
Maybe one piece of property or two, if you have the time, examples.
At least multiple pieces of properties for the table.
Right, yes.
And then with the density, we may, we'll try to.
The graphics, if you will, yeah, okay.
So I have another question. So if it is true that at some point, the growth boundary won't be restricted by the sewer authority, what, what would this cause for our country? Either it is, I mean, if that ever does come to.
If you're asking if there's ever a time where sewer is not restricted, like if elected officials are saying, we, we're no longer going to restrict where sewer can go to within the growth boundary? Well, its impact, obviously, as you could see, requests for rezoning then outside of where the existing boundary is, with the concept that we can achieve a higher-density development because we can do public sewer instead, so.
Then this 1.5 would be then also available.
Well, yeah, that's, but that's a question of, you know, ultimately for the township, would you want to ever see growth like that in your rural areas? I mean, that's, that's a township question down the road of, do you want to see high-density now on the outskirts of your developed core?
Yeah, I don't think, by creating 1.5 doesn't mean we do away with R1, right?
Oh, I'm just saying that there's a, there's a groundswell of not having the sewer and water authority determining growth, is what we have now.
I believe that's just in Harris Township, a groundswell. And, so I, and I think, I think it's a, I think that's a tough one. And I really believe it's, it's really more to allow sewer to extend into some areas where it might be practical, and I could see some allowances for that, but I, I think that would be complicated, so I, I don't think, I think this can happen a lot quicker than amending the, the growth boundary issue.
But it could come down, you know, down, down the road, long-term, could be an issue that comes up.
Well, I think, yeah, hopefully there are other things put into play before that happens, because there are a lot of different aspects to it, because you're going to start affecting water if you start doing that.
Yeah.
And that's a big issue.
Mark, is this enough to get us to more conversation, if not next month, after that?
Absolutely, yeah, this would be for, we probably have plenty of time since next month.
Yeah.
We should have enough time to do multiple graphics and tables and data and information for you by, by June.
Okay. Anything else on the residential zoning issue? It's a good one to be tackling, for sure, and, you know, the, just taking a nod back to last month's meeting and the other things still to come, zoning districts for the Planning Commission to look at and review, we've got our work cut out for us, so it's good we're moving it along, and, but also recognize that we don't want to hurry it, keep things, keep things progressing at the same time. Good. Amy, or do you want to talk about, or Mark, the CRPA Planning Commissioner training? And are we already signed up to do it at this meeting next month?
Yes.
And inviting other regional Planning Commission members to zoom in or sit in?
Yeah, so at this point, I think, you know, we as staff don't believe there's going to be any plans necessarily for the agenda unless something were to change here pretty soon. So CRPA was really looking to find its first post, and it seemed like maybe a logical opportunity to have Harris Township post the first session. So, yeah, we would probably take forty to six, forty-five to sixty minutes, and that would be including the discussion time.
Yeah, okay.
If there's any plans that were to commit, we could handle those as well.
Do you have a sense of what might be first on the, what chapter you might hit first?
Yeah, there should be a flyer coming out pretty soon that has all the topics. So the first one is going to be just kind of introduction to planning in the center region and how we have a multi-municipal structure and some of the benefits of that. And then the second session, just to make everyone aware, ahead of time, is going to be the first Thursday in June, which I can't think of the date, it might be the third. That's going to be actually at the regularly scheduled CR.
Second?
The second, it's going to be the regularly scheduled CRPC meeting, and that one's going to cover regional planning documents that Planning Commissioners need to be aware of and consider as you're doing ordinance amendments or plan reviews and things of that nature. And then the last three sessions are probably not going to be held until the fall.
Okay.
Just because we recognize people in the summertime probably don't want to come to training on a nice summer's evening.
Okay, that's, that's a good roadmap for looking ahead, and, and we can talk to.
The trainers, too.
Yeah, good point. We can talk to staff about, thank you, you know, if there is anything else that we might want to squeeze in in May, but we don't have to set that at this time. Outside of the training, that, I meant. Okay. Anything else on this? I'm glad this is moving ahead. I have to say that in talking to Planning Commission members, including some new ones and new, new alternates, there is a need for this kind of basic training, and whether you're brand-new or sort of new, or have been at, around it a while, there's, there's the volume of terms and concepts, particularly for the layperson, if you will, is, is significant. So this will be, this will be a good step, I'm glad that we're doing this. I think that's moving ahead. Okay, I think we're on to, there's some zoning permits circulating around. Actually, why don't you guys look at these while we continue on, and then I'll take those after you're done with it, Amy, you look at those. And we have reports now from our various committees and commissions. Amy, thank you for continuing to represent the township on the Center Region Planning Commission, and what is your report for us?
Thank you, Chris. The CRPC had a joint meeting with the Land Use CI.
Community Infrastructure.
Community Infrastructure on April 7th, and we received two presentations. One had to do with preparing for the comprehensive plan, and we are considering a new framework, or we are doing a new framework. And that has been discussed already at this meeting, that the new approach has more to do with recognizing the good work that already has been done with existing reports, and building sort of a network of, of getting those reports and efforts to be coordinated. Is that fair? Okay. Second topic during the joint meeting was, we received a report on primary-scale solar, and that is new terminology for that community scale, which is, or sorry, the new terminology for people who are producing power to sell and market, as opposed to community scale, which is personal use. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Two different kinds of solar, one is for selling and producing and selling back to the grid, the other is for personal use.
So now the accepted terms are primary and community?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the presentation that we received was also accompanied by a toolkit and report, and these are resources that are now available to us. There will not be an official approval process for these, but they are meant for our use. Do you have anything to add to that?
Not just that, I will provide you with a copy of that final toolkit here at an upcoming meeting. There's a few tweaks we're going to make based on some of your comments, as well as a few other comments from the committee and the commission, so that should be forthcoming.
Yeah, so there were several, yeah, a few comments, so that's coming our way and will be a resource for, for this group in thinking about that for Harris Township.
Which, which is on our work plan for, for this year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
It's going to, going to come back, it was here, Center Region, now back to Township.
That's right, and that was the plan all along, to have Center Region sort of take it on first, before Harris Township did.
So you guys have come up with a toolkit, but the decision to have this in Harris Township comes back to us.
Yeah, it's always the municipality's decision of whether or not you want to permit something in how, but this provides best practices on how you could go about regulating.
That's right. So, so we now have something to work with in, or considering primary-scale solar. So we will, we have these meetings twice a year, this was, twice a year? Twice a year, and so this was the first, and so we will go back to regular CRPC meetings in May. The next meeting will be May 5th. Sorry.
Okay.
Yep, May 5th.
Thank you. George Harrington continues to represent us on the CMPO Technical Committee, and he emailed a report to us. Amy, is there anything you wanted, or anyone else wanted to highlight on, on George's, George's report, including PennDOT and, and other, other matters?
Yeah, I would just highlight that PennDOT's working on the connector project still, and they just had their public meetings for that, and they told us, today I was at a meeting with them, and they said, probably July, they'll have it narrowed down to two to three, possibly four alignments that move forward.
Thank you. Jeff?
On, on that note, should we be, Amy, picking out the, the alignment that we hate the least? So we're, so we're prepared?
Yeah, I mean, I will say, I was at a private residence today, meeting with PennDOT and some residents, and from that meeting, I think I have a feeling as to which alignment they're preferring, but they, of course, will not say that, so we did submit comment from the board, asking that they thoroughly evaluate the greenhouse gas emissions of each alignment in accordance with the Center Region's climate adaptation plan, and that they publicize if they choose to defer and not choose the plan, that if not choose the alignment is the least amount of emissions, because we're definitely concerned about that. There's also some new information related to the US-15 bypass outside of Harrisburg that would take trucks directly to AD and Williamsport, so we're trying to get them to update their modeling based on that, because with sixty-two percent of the trucks wanting to go to AD, our question to PennDOT is, if sixty-two percent of the trucks pick up AD, pick up the US-15 bypass and go that way to get on AD, is there a totally different project that you need to do that isn't quite as invasive as what we're discussing now?
Thank you. Very interesting. Can be exciting.
You have an interesting term for exciting.
Backup, backup signals.
Yeah, really.
Bob, you want to tell us about Spring Creek Watershed Commission, please?
Last meeting was in mid-March, and I reported on it then. They're into creating a technical committee for implement, for Phase 3. So that's really kind of developing, creating a committee that will do the implementation of the, thinking of the implementation and the implementation, so still kind of nebulous at this point in time.
But you've not met since that March meeting?
No, our next meeting is May 18th, so we, I won't report out again on Spring Creek Watershed Commission until June.
Okay. Thank you. Randy, Village Parking?
The Village Parking Committee met last week, Tuesday last week. After about half dozen meetings, this meeting was devoted to establishing a list of bullet points of concerns, issues, suggestions. So the entire meeting was devoted to establish, Bob Hoffman, the chair, wrote a list of, of bullet points. I numbered them at ten on my notes. Amy offered to type them up, she added them into six. Amy offered to type them up, she added them into six, and distributed them to everyone at the, on the committee, with the idea that the feedback, funnel of feedback to her for the purpose of refining the list to bring to the Planning Commission whenever next is appropriate. If it's not appropriate for the, the May meeting because of the, the planning, I guess it would be put off, but, so the next time we have a regular business meeting, we should have a list of bullet points, concerns, and issues from the Parking Committee.
Okay. A question or...
Just one note on that, the Village Parking Committee is actually putting together a report, so that's what that list that Amy's talking about is. The report will actually go to the Board of Supervisors, probably in June, maybe in July, and then from there, the board can choose and it may come to the Planning Commission. So it's not coming to the Planning Commission first.
Oh, I assume...
Okay, so I'll just throw out a question, were any of the bullet points regulatory in nature, meaning changing our regulations, like not requiring parking for properties in the Village District or something?
Well, there, there's a couple that pertain to parking requirements such as in the back of business versus on the street, that type of thing, yes, there are a couple.
There you go.
Handwritten notes.
Well, and these are, these are the, the raw material that are still being, still being edited for...
Right.
For, for folks.
All right.
Randy, thank you. Anything else on, on Village, Village Parking?
No, I'm going to read the, the list of bullet points, but you've got...
But it sounds like, it sounds like they're still being refined.
Yes, exactly.
And the other committee members need a chance to, to react to those. Let's let that internal process play out before it comes to us, if it comes to us, as Amy says, after the, which I kind of think it will, after the Board of Supervisors say, we need help, that's my, that's what I anticipate. Official MAP Subcommittee, I have not been able to make the, the meetings that have started. Amy, do you want to talk about that, or anyone else on the commission who is on that Official MAP Subcommittee have, have things to share about it?
I'll bring up one thing that they're working on, and then Bob is also on, Bob and Richard both also on that, maybe they want to fill in anything, but one of the things we want to identify on that update of the official map, and the last version of the official map is sort of like a wish list, and we want this one to be more functional. So we're talking about doing, Mark showed us some cool software that we can do a survey and ask people where they're biking and walking to, and what recreational networks they're going to, so we can sort of identify all of these connections and make sure that they're being captured on the official map itself. So that's pretty exciting, because we'll put that out to the residents in the township to find out, you know, and also asking questions about, like, what is your biggest impediment to riding a bike in Harris Township, or your biggest impediment to walking in Harris Township? So we can identify some long-term, you know, things that we need to address, so. And I know Bob had talked about, I thought he had a great suggestion of putting some stormwater basins and long-term stormwater facilities, some of the projects that are in our pollution reduction plan through the state of Pennsylvania, on the official map, just so that they're also located someplace and kind of have that theory in house.
That's a good idea.
Okay. When is the next meeting, has that been set?
It's always the, Mark helped me, is it the first Monday or the...
May 2nd, first Monday of the month, I want.
First Monday.
Okay, great, thank you. No planning items on the recent actions by the Board of Supervisors. Some things you can see here on the, on the Connector. Anything else on that?